It's nice to see you in person. And we will open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Weot language as Jerojiji. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Weot and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Weot community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. If we could have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez is absent. Councilmember Bauer is absent. Councilmember Contra Stalos?
Here.
Mayor Burgel?
Here.
And would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? This is a special meeting, and so pursuant to the Brown Act, the public shall be provided an opportunity to speak only on items that are listed on special meeting agenda. Public comment will be taken after the presentation of the item. In pursuit to City Council Resolution 2011-22, City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. And so with that, we will turn it over to City Manager Slattery for a report on...
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. At a previous council meeting, council directed staff to bring back information related to the Palestine-Israeli conflict and CalPERS investment in businesses that are contributing to that conflict, as well as businesses that are in Israel. I do want to say that I've received a lot of phone calls from community members about this item, a lot of confusion concerning this item. Many thought that the discussion was going to be related to the city of Eureka itself, removing itself from our employees being in that retirement system with CalPERS. That is not the case. The item that was requested to be brought forward was a letter, a potential letter, or get information related to CalPERS, first of all, but also a potential letter to send to the Board of Directors to request that they divest in those businesses that are contributing to the conflict and also within Israel. So just want to make that clear, that's what this topic is. So CalPERS currently holds a lot of investments in the state of Israel and several multinational corporations that they invest in, supply military technology, arms, and logistical support to the conflict. We have put together a draft letter for council's consideration to send to the Board of Directors. There have been divestments in the CalPERS system previously. They are related to Iran and Sudan, as well as the tobacco industry, the coal industry, and firearms industries. They do not invest in... Those are based off of congressional acts that happened in the past. And so the draft is available if you guys would like to discuss that, and staff is available if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for City Manager Slattery? Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, and thank you for putting this together. Do you have an idea what kind of percentage we might be talking about as far as the total portfolio of CalPERS that falls under these categories?
I apologize. A percentage was really difficult to come to because there's a lot of multinational corporations that may be ancillary connected to it. And so in the research that we have done, I do know that it's CalPERS, as well as Cal STERS, for the Teachers Union are one of the largest investors in the world. CalPERS invests, right now, $556 billion of investments. We kind of wanted to stay away from what would be construed as contributing or not. Very clearly Israeli national businesses are some of those, and those are easy to depict. But the ones that contribute to, you know, the technology and the arms and logistical stuff, it's really hard to decipher exactly what that amount is.
So do you think there's possibly some mutual funds or other things that have, like, low-risk portfolios that tend to invest in these really big, stable corporations? So we're looking at maybe distasteful things, sort of hidden in the details in there as well?
Yeah, 100%, yes. And I think that, I mean, Israel itself is one of, I believe, 33 in the research that staff had done, main investors, what did they call them? They called them... An advanced economy, so there's 33 countries. Israel, as well as the United States, are one of those advanced economies that International Monetary Fund recognizes.
Thank you, and thank you also for pointing out the precedent of CalPERS refusing to or divesting from other situations similar to this where genocide or human rights violations have occurred, that there is a history of this. So I appreciate that.
I do want to make the clarification that that's not necessarily at the Board of Directors' discretion. The research that staff has done is, who knows that... Their constitution, what does it say here? "The Constitution of the governing boards of CalPERS and other public retirement systems have sole and exclusive fiduciary responsibility over the assets and their respective systems." "The Constitution further provides that each system's duty to its participants and their beneficiaries shall take precedence over any other duty." So when I think those divestments occurred, it was from a higher authority.
That's all for now, thank you.
Thank you. Any... Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. So, you know, in my small amount of research on CalPERS, you know, I also found what you reported in that they have a policy, you know, basically preventing divestment unless there's a federal or state, federal state law, and/or like consideration that the investments won't yield a good return. So, you know, like for the Divestment from Iran Act, that was, that was California state law, and I believe the other, Sudan, I believe is federal?
Sudan, yep.
And it's interesting that, you know, the tobacco divestment, people have kind of gone back and forth, but the reason they divested is because they felt like with the amount of litigation against tobacco companies, that it would be a bad investment. Do you know of any movements at the state level related to, you know, enacting law about this and/or, you know, like litigation that might cause CalPERS to think that these investments would be unprofitable?
I'm not aware of. I think some of the information I received was back from 2010, where there was a similar thing with Israel and a divestment through some legislative act. But the only thing that I've seen from a government slash quasi-government or agency that has written a letter to the board was from Cal Berkeley's Teachers Association, I believe it was, and they had put something forward to their school district. But I have not seen any existing legislation nor government entities doing... There's been a lot of discussion about it, but I'm not familiar with anything that's actually occurred.
Great, thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Contra Stalos?
Yeah, I had a couple. So, let's see, second paragraph, last sentence, comparing that to number one right beneath it. So it says, "Just as institutions around the world supported economic sanctions against South Africa's apartheid, in 1990, we now call upon CalPERS to divest from all its assets and companies supporting Israeli apartheid and genocide." And then right underneath it, it says, "We call upon CalPERS to take immediate action too." And then it says, "Divest from all companies and bonds that enable, facilitate, or profit from weapons manufacturing and human rights violations, in particular violations of international law, military occupation, apartheid, and genocide." That, number one, sounds like we're saying we want them to divest from any sort of, that could apply to any of the, you know, somewhere around 40 armed conflicts around the world, however many were invested in. But that last sentence in the second paragraph makes it sound like we're just zeroing in on one. Can you clarify for me what the intent is?
Yeah, that is my mistake, that it should be more specific to the conflict in Israel, Palestine.
And then I have a second, a different question. The one for the teachers, is that CalPERS or is it STERS?
That is STERS.
Okay. So then the other question I have is in number four. It says, "Engage in transparent and ongoing dialogue with educators and stakeholders about the ethical implication of CalPERS investments, including periodic reports, or on the process of divestment." So we're including educators in that. Is that because we're talking about higher ed? Is higher ed, CalPERS, and K-12 is STERS, or are they both STERS? Can you clarify for me?
I'm not sure specifically. Councilmember Fernandez may not...
Clarify from my day work that CalPERS definitely takes care of higher ed. K-12 is STERS.
Okay, that's what I thought, but it wasn't certain.
And so for folks in the room, one would be, you know, already the California Public Employee Retirement System. The other one would be entirely aimed at K-12 teachers.
Okay.
And adjacent staff.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Any further questions? Saying none at this time? So I have no questions at this time, so we will open this item up for a public comment. I just want to read a quick statement. So, public comment, "All persons in attendance at public meetings are requested to observe the following rules of civil debate. We may disagree, but we will be respectful to one another. All comments will be directed to the issue at hand. Personal attacks are not acceptable, and applauding or other displays of approval, disapproval are discouraged." So we will be taking our standard three minutes, and so if you'd like to line up along the wall there, we'd love to hear from you. And whoever would like to come up first? Come on up. Welcome.
Let me raise that up a little bit for you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. My name's Ellen. I usually attend on Zoom, but I made a special effort to come here today in person. I am here to express my support for the City Council sending this letter. It is the right thing to do, and I thank you for listening to your community. Yesterday, I witnessed another atrocity carried out by Israel in Gaza. Rescue workers in brightly colored vests, clearly trying to help people out of a hospital building that had just been bombed, were suddenly directly hit with a second missile. I've read about this kind of thing in so many firsthand accounts, and I know it is a tactic that Israel has used for decades. It even has a name. It's called a double tap. It's where Israel attacks a site, waits for all the helpers to come, the ambulances, EMTs, rescue workers, and then strikes it again. The goal is simply to kill as many people as possible. It is evil, and it is common practice by Israel. It is easy to feel helpless in the face of such horrific, calculated, relentless slaughter. And although we are just a small city on the other side of the world, and nothing we could do will be enough, it still matters that we do what we can. Because by urging CalPERS to divest from genocide, we will be adding our advocacy to a statewide campaign, supported by many individuals and other municipalities. If we collectively put enough pressure on CalPERS, I believe they will finally take action to divest from genocide and reinvest those funds into more ethical investments that reflect our values. Divestment works. We will be following the lead of activists who helped take down the apartheid regime in South Africa. CalPERS has already divested from other funds that cause widespread harm. There is ample precedent to take this action. Money is power. With over $1.4 billion invested in the companies specifically warned by the UN that they risk being complicit in genocide, CalPERS can make a meaningful impact. By encouraging CalPERS to divest from these companies, Eureka will be adding to the pressure already being put on Israel to end their atrocities by countries, pensions, unions, and other municipalities from all around the world. We will truly be on the side of humanity. I urge you all to vote yes, make this unanimous, and put yourselves and our city on the right side of history. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Sorry, it was too high for you.
Good evening. My name's Karpani.
Welcome.
I'm realizing that you haven't even voted on this yet. But what I really want to say is, thank you. Thank you for listening to your community. Thank you for listening to all the people that are in so much pain over this genocide, people being murdered every day. Thank you for listening to your heart. Because if you've been seeing what I've been seeing, you can't deny we have to do something. And you can no longer abide by being part of it, which being invested in CalPERS for your retirements is part of it. So there's no way that you, there's no way that I can live with that, and I'm not a recipient. So I have to ask you, how could you? And I'm thinking that with everything you've been hearing over the months, seeing on news, whatever you've been getting your information, you must realize you cannot participate. I want to say that you yourselves, and you as a body, are not alone. As you acknowledge in your draft letter, you're joining other individuals and municipalities in advocacy of a better and ethical way to serve your communities. Creates the unity we need to not be alone, but to be supported in the broader community with creativity and so many other resources to serve the people, all of the people in Eureka and by the ripple in the water, everybody. Everybody benefits by this divestment. The work you've chosen is extremely challenging, and you are here demonstrating that you have the courage and the resolve to trust your collective heart, to do what's necessary, to serve your community and your country in the very best way. Thank you for modeling this brave example of leadership by voting to send that letter to CalPERS to divest. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for giving members of the community an opportunity to speak on this issue, and thank you to the drafters of this letter. My name is Janet. I am a recipient of a Cal, or I will be, of a CalPERS retirement plan. And just to clarify, since we've been talking about kind of bureaucratic issues, the California Community Colleges are part of the Cal STERS retirement system, so it's not just K-12. I'm here today because as a community member of Greater Eureka and as a Jewish American, I feel so strong, and a recipient of CalPERS, I feel so strongly that we need to send a very loud message to CalPERS that we will not give up our moral responsibility as individuals and as a collective because we're afraid, because we're afraid we might be breaking the rules, because we're afraid we might get pushback from our constituents or the press, because we're afraid maybe our retirement is under threat. We need to stand together as a community like we did during the land back, when I was so proud of the city of Eureka, and we got amazing international coverage for the courage and how groundbreaking that was. And here we have another issue of indigenous land theft, and to the point of apartheid, occupation, and genocide in our time, right now, as we are watching on our screens. And I just want to encourage folks not to worry about, well, can CalPERS divest? What does that mean? But rather to think of us as a collective, a part of an international movement. I got my start in terms of organizing protesting apartheid in South Africa, and we were told over and over again, it can't be done, it can't be done. I went to Barclays Bank, and they laughed at us and said it can't be done. But if you live long enough, if you're fortunate enough to live long enough, you realize that the things that you were told can't be done can actually be done if we work together. And using divestment is a very strong tool if we work together and think about the larger goals and the larger moral issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Hello and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Micah Starr. I am a classified employee in Eureka City Schools. Thank you. So I am a, I will be a CalPERS recipient. I love my job. I truly love the work that I do. And that's, I mean, to be real, I have a lot of anger at CalPERS that I can't opt out of it. My paycheck, part of it, automatically always goes to it, which is great, so that I can have a retirement. But the fact that I have no ability to withdraw funds that are being used to murder noncombatants in Gaza makes me really angry, especially as a Jewish person. And my anger is not towards any of you. In fact, I'm really grateful that we're all having this conversation, considering signing the letter. And I like to have faith in our moral courage and strength to do what is right, maybe even before others may be joining the same. But it's also increasingly clear, even from a financial standpoint, that continuing to invest in Israel is more risky. The economy there has not been doing well. So as a fiduciary duty to CalPERS recipients, I think it's also in our interest to divest as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Alice Finan, and I'm an educator. Actually, did my student teaching here in Eureka at Jefferson School and Lafayette, and I subbed here, and now I get to be a care provider for several community members that live here. And first of all, I wanted to tell you thank you for bringing forward this discussion item. I read the agenda summary, and the first thing that stood out to me is that there's no fiscal impact in requesting CalPERS divest from holding investments in the settler state of Israel and in several multinational corporations that are supplying military technology, arms, and logistical support that is contributing to the Holocaust and continuation of the extreme violence the Zionist regime is committing against the indigenous population of Palestine. And, you know, we, as a socially responsible community that are committed to justice and human rights and dismantling the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism, have got to do everything that we can, everything in our power, to stand up against these violations that Israel is committing. We have to stop the settler colonialist state because it's not going to stop itself. It's going to keep committing these atrocities. Recently, Israel called in 60,000 reservists for its planned offensive in Gaza, while ceasefire talks right now are showing signs of progressing. Ceasefire means nothing to Israel. Israel would not be content, they won't be content, until they rid the land of the indigenous population, and they're not going to stop with Palestine. They're going to move on to Greater Israel, which is a plan they've had since 1968. They also just approved the construction of nearly 3,500 new apartments in the West Bank, which is illegal under international law because it means the displacement of Palestinians, the destruction of their homes that are already there, and the theft of their land that they've had for hundreds and thousands of years. They want to divide the West Bank into a northern and southern region, which would prevent the continuity of Palestinian territory, and it's another way for the Israeli government to assert control and divide Palestinians. I know that people are commenting that you need to focus on problems that are right here in the community, and I have got to say that Israel is our problem. We send them billions of dollars every year. They're the United States puppet master. They control our policy and our politicians. The propaganda is so strong, and there's one thing that we need to know, it's that that propaganda is a distraction. So it's time for us to cut the puppet strings and divest from Israel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Marley Nelson. I am a local community activist, and I am speaking today to ask that the city of Eureka send a letter to CalPERS to pressure them to divest from those companies that are supporting Israel's genocide of Palestinians. Many of the folks who came and spoke before me made very excellent and well-researched points, and frankly, I didn't write anything quite that compelling because I find this issue to be so cut and dry. As someone else pointed out, there is no financial impact. I would hope that every person in this room is opposed to genocide, and therefore, it seems like the only just and sensible action is to write this letter and is to ultimately have CalPERS divest from these genocidal Israeli companies. So I wish I had more to say, but it just seems so obvious that that's all I have. So please divest, and I thank you for doing so.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Amy. I was tempted to sit back down because I feel like everyone has really eloquently covered all of the things that are on my heart and in my mind, and I didn't write anything I meant to, and I didn't. It does also occur to me that this is so very, very simple, since the ask is just to send the letter, which is just to send a request, right? It's just an ask. And I do think that it's, for me at least, as a mother, knowing that I can look my kids in the eye and I can say, I'm doing my best, and I think that probably for all of you, you have people in your lives who you'd like to be able to look in the eye and say, I am doing something. It might not be a lot, but it's something, and this is just something that you can do, and there is a precedent for it. Yeah, that's about it. Thank you for calling the meeting, and please sign the letter.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. I am a registered voter in the city of Eureka, and I'm here to show support for the City Council to send a letter demanding that CalPERS retirement plan divest from any and all capital that supports the genocide on Palestine. It has been nearly two years since the USA and Israel escalated to a campaign of open mass murder against the people of Gaza. Francesca Albanese, UN Special Rapporteur to the occupied Palestinian territories, has stated that it's a fact, not an opinion, that what Israel and the US are doing is a campaign of genocide. There is a growing consensus of legal scholars and human rights experts around the world... There is a growing consensus of legal scholars and human rights experts around the world that Israel is committing genocide and ethnic cleansing. According to meta-studies such as one published by Lancet, the US government and its media outlets are grossly underestimating the true death toll on Gazans. The true death toll is not 60, 70, 80,000, but it's likely closer to 200,000 or more. We will not know the true death toll until after the genocide is over, if at all, because Israel continues to bury and destroy evidence despite being ordered by the UN to stop doing so. At this point, I want to dedicate 20 seconds of silence, one second for every 10,000 people killed directly or indirectly by Israel in Gaza. Every little thing that Israel and its supporters say to justify and apologize for its atrocity is ultimately irrelevant because collective punishment is a crime and Israel is committing collective punishment ipso facto. Please understand that history will not look kindly on those who supported or apologized for the Gaza genocide. On the other hand, you have every legal, ethical, and historical reason to demand divestment from Israel on every level. Please join prominent Jewish intellectuals Norm Finkelstein, Gabor Maté, Noam Chomsky, Medea Benjamin, Elon Poppy, and millions of Palestinians in opposing Israel's genocidal onslaught on Palestine. I promise we will support you and so will the majority of the world which sees and understands what's going on. Like with apartheid South Africa, external action is needed to change the atrocious status quo. Thank you for listening to us.
Thanks for being here. Come on up.
Hi, city council. I haven't ever been here before, I live over in Arcata. It's nice to see you all. I heard this was a special session and it was encouraging to me because you guys are here when you don't have to be as far as I know. Thanks for showing up. A little bit of a history lesson. When Hitler invaded the Soviet Union, he did so and his followers did with a policy of Lebensraum. They said, living space, we need living space. The German people that we want to grow and grow and grow, there's not enough room. So, we need to go and take all of these other lands from other people and specifically racially inferior people. They, in their hierarchy of who's better and who's worse, put Slavs pretty close to the bottom. They went on to, after their invasion, kill 27 million men, women, and children in the Soviet Union. This is the exact same thing that the Israelis would like to do to the Palestinians. Lebensraum and Zionism are mirrors of one another. With that in mind, we need to send this letter to CalPERS. I've been watching kids for two years now, as somebody else said, eating livestock pies. I've watched them get their legs chopped off with no anesthetic because of the bombs that are being sent from our country, from this state no less. Down in Woodward, they have a factory where they track the numbers on the shell casings from Gaza to our state. These are being dropped on children and all sorts of other people. If I knew that out of CalPERS', I think 2024, $469 billion assets were handling, that there was this much, $50 million, I believe, wrapped up in something like that, an amount that was this trivial, I would want it gone. I wouldn't want no fingerprint of mine to lay on this because, as somebody else said, again, this is going to be remembered for a long time and not kindly. We need to remove our grip, our complicity as much as we can from this bullshit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Charles Wilson. For the last four or five years, my Genevieve and my wife have been waving at people out here by the flagpole. We have our posters, we make people happy. They can't read our signs, you know, they're driving by too fast. But the thing is, one point I would like to make is that there is no war in Gaza. The Gaza people do not have any planes. They do not have any tanks. They do not have any armored bulldozers. They do not have any US-paid-for 2,000-pound bombs. They do not have any of that stuff. The Israeli Zionist group says that they have precision bombing. That means that they can target the hospitals, they can target the aid stations, they can target the refugee camps. Oh, we accidentally got some extra people. Oh, my goodness. We got, what was, almost 70,000 people now. And if you add up the number of people dead from Korea and for Vietnam, that's about 70,000 people that died. And here, it's just a small group of people. There are only 2.5 million, 2 million now. They're getting less and less. And so, the thing is, one piece of paper isn't going to do much. But the thing is, at least it's a sign that you don't support killing everybody just because you have this idea of creating a Zionist empire from the river to the sea. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, nice to see you. Come on up.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for drafting the letter to CalPERS. Just echoing what everyone has said 1,000%. I wouldn't want any fingerprint of mine to lay on this and with something as easy as appealing to a body with actual monetary power, I think it's our duty. I'm a teacher. My retirement fund stirs in a similar situation. They also contribute billions of dollars to Israel. I sent a letter and appealed to them and I just ask you guys to do the same. Thanks.
Thanks for being here. Come on up.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sprout. See some familiar faces up there. I'm an anti-Zionist Jew and I'm a voter in Eureka. I'm here in support of this request for divestment letter being sent to CalPERS, divestment from the genocide of all indigenous people of Palestine. And I want the city I live in to divest as much as possible from Palestine or divest as much as possible from genocide. It's true that divestment works, every bit counts. Every city that can do this counts, that can send letters and push the needle more in the direction of divestment from genocide. So, yeah, I just urge you to please hear all the like beautiful words and eloquent phrases and numbers and facts and things that everyone set up here and hear the words of your community and your constituents. And please send a letter and set another precedent up here on the North Coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to comment? Hi there, welcome, come on up.
Hello, good afternoon, I'm Gracie. And I applaud the city staff for drafting this letter. Sorry. Calling for the divestment to CalPERS to divest from any divesting from Israel and anything having to do with a war machine. We don't need our money, our retirement funds going to a war machine. We don't need to be knowing that we can retire and save heaven when we're creating hell in another place. So, I encourage you all, council, to send the letter to tell CalPERS to divest from Israel. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Come on up. Welcome.
Thanks, hello, my name is Philip. I come from Ferndale. Basically, with CalPERS and our investments, well, with money that's coming from taxpayers that's going towards weapons, technologies such as spy networks, basically everything that Caltrera has pointed out, I think it was like two meetings ago, about how tied in everything is to surveillance states. We kind of had to take a lot of this, not just as frivolous symbolic things, but markers that us as a community, us as a people are actually going to take any and every advantage to step away from what the larger governments and companies are trying to actually fulfill, which is always profit motives. And at this point, they're commodifying all of us and expanding it into this larger war network. All that to say that in this cold, methodical way, we are seeing the nation-states of Israel and the United States working to torture, starve, drug a people that they have used as an experimental rat cage this whole time. And just because none of it was brought to attention, Palestinians have been coming here, at least 15 years ago when I was in college, trying to draw awareness to this problem. Because even at that point, their livelihoods weren't autonomous. They had no rights towards self-development. When you're under that level of pressure and even your government is funded and manipulated and supplanted by another nation-state, making excuses because of the corporate models that we have for rationalizing all of our endeavors doesn't work. I hope that you guys will take the time to look at your portfolios, what things are feeding into it because while it helps make a stand, it also makes a stand on the larger fascist movements that we are seeing around. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Hello. Sorry. Hi, city council people. You know, I'm Pat. I am here to voice my concern about the CalPERS investments. I believe you are considering sending a letter to CalPERS to divest from genocide and reinvest those funds into more ethical investments that reflect the values of this community as seen with a vello. We must also sanction a rogue state that has nuclear capability but has never, ever admitted they have it and has not signed onto the Nuclear Proliferation Treaty. And I am naming Israel as a terrorist state. The US is arbitrary on whom it assigns the label terrorist to. Look at Syria, a state taken over by HTS, which is an ISIS affiliate. But because they do the US's work, the US took them off the list. I say we must sanction Israel. They bomb whoever they please, Gaza, Syria, Lebanon, Iran, and continue bombing even after the ceasefire has been called. These and many reasons, not just genocide, but ethnic cleansing, assassination, torture, starvation, which is being used as a ruse of war. When I describe our ethics, they emphatically include our or my distaste and disgust for Israel's abominations, which is why I am raising my voice to support the city council in their letter to ask CalPERS to divest from Israel. I cannot conclude without an emotional appeal regarding Israel's actions. The starvation in itself is torture, assassination of babies with bullets through their head, bombing hospitals and doctors, nurses, and the journalists who would carry the truth of Israel's actions. If there is antisemitism, it is not due to pro-Palestinians but due to the actions of Israel itself. And I weep on this, for as a pro-Palestinian, I know that there is a difference between a Zionist and a Jew. Zionists are destroying what little credibility that Jews have, as is Trump. Israel is doing Trump's work or is Trump doing Israel's work. Please send a letter to CalPERS. And as a member of Taxpayers Against Genocide, I just want to inform you that we have a warrant for Jared Huffman against, for genocide. We have a warrant for Pelosi, wanted for genocide. Also for Biden and Trump, Schumer, Padilla also. So, anyway, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, is there anyone else in chambers who would like to speak on this item? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Misty Clapp, that's C-L-A-P-P. And I would like to start by reading a scripture from the Holy Bible.
So, Misty, you did come in late. I just want to let you know this is a special meeting and you can read your scripture, but we are only commenting on this specific item and the item is...
It's relevant.
Okay, great.
And this is...
Thank you, sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay, this passage is by the prophet Isaiah. It was written before Jesus was born, very, very long before Jesus was born. And it's talking about the land of Judah and anyone who opposes the land of Judah, who is the Hebrew God's nation. And let me just read it. "In that day, this song will be sung in the land of Judah. We have a strong city. He sets up salvation as walls and bulwarks. Open the gates that the righteous nation, which keeps faith, may enter in. Thou dost keep him in perfect peace, whose mind is stayed on thee, because he trusts in thee. Trust in the Lord forever, for the Lord God is an everlasting rock; for he has brought low the inhabitants of the height, the lofty city. He lays it low, lays it low to the ground, casts it to the dust. The foot tramples it, the feet of the poor, the steps of the needy. The way of the righteous is level. Thou dost make smooth the path of the righteous in the path of thy judgments. O Lord, we wait for thee. Thy memorial name is the desire of our soul. My soul yearns for thee in the night, my spirit within me earnestly seeks thee. For when thy judgments are in the earth, the inhabitants of the world learn righteousness. If favor is shown to the wicked, he does not learn righteousness. In the land of uprightness, he deals perversely and does not see the majesty of the Lord. O Lord, thy hand is lifted up, but they see it not. Let them see thy zeal for thy people and be ashamed. Let fire for thy adversaries consume them. Lord, thou wilt ordain peace for us. Thou hast wrought for us all our works. O Lord, our God, other lords besides thee have ruled over us, but thy name alone we acknowledge. They are dead, they will not live, they are shades, they will not arise. To that end, thou hast visited them with destruction and wiped out all remembrance of them. But thou hast increased the nation, O Lord. Thou hast increased the nation, thou art glorified. Thou hast enlarged all the borders of the land, O Lord. In distress they sought thee, they poured out a prayer, when thy chastening was upon them like a woman with child." All I have to say beyond that is that anyone who opposes God's people opposes God himself and there could be negative consequences. So, choose wisely.
Thank you for being here, Misty. Okay, so thank you, everybody, for being respectful, I appreciate that. Is there anybody else in chambers? I think we've covered everybody, looks like. Do you see anybody on Zoom?
Lex?
Hi, my name is Lex Seber and I am just here to echo what the majority, almost every single person who has spoken to advocate for divesting in the genocide of Palestinian peoples and beyond. I don't really have a lot else. I have so many words, so many things to say, but again, I think everyone has already said them. And... to say, but again, I think everyone has already said them. And yeah, please do the right thing. That is all.
Thank you, Lex.
Amy?
Hi, I am joining to also add my voice to the chorus of people imploring you guys to please encourage Calpers to divest from this genocide, from this harm. I know you guys have been hearing about it so long. And I appreciate you taking the time to have this special meeting to really give the due diligence to this cause that it deserves. This is happening in our name, funded by our tax dollars. We are complicit in this. And, you know, we often can feel hopeless about what we can actually do to help mitigate the harm in the world. And this is one very small little thing that we can do. And all of those small things together of individuals standing up and doing this helps create the force that we need to stop, to stop what's happening. So, yeah, I appreciate you taking this time. Thank you for considering the plight of the Palestinian people. And I'm looking forward to you guys passing this and being another force to challenge the direction that this country is headed in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Jackie?
Hello, I'm just here to be another voice in support of the Calpers letter that has been written up. Please send it and divest from genocide. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Marissa?
Hello. Similar to the previous speakers and many speakers today, to encourage you to support the letter for divestment, it's a bit of a cliche that we can vote with our dollars, but it is one of the most powerful tools we have in showing the society what we value and what we don't want to support. So, thank you for making a special meeting for this, and thank you, everyone, for speaking today.
Thank you.
Lev?
Hello. My name is Lev, local Jew, speaking in favor of Calpers divestment. The Jewish people were refugees for hundreds of years after the Roman wars and the destruction of the temple in the first century. Now, the state of Israel has caused millions of Palestinians to become refugees, and much, much worse. To make refugees of another people is one of the most evil and most un-Jewish things that a country can do. City Council, please act in favor of Calpers divestment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jasmine?
Hi, I am another one of your local Jewish constituents, and I would like to echo what Lev and everyone else has said in my support for you doing the very simple task of sending a letter supporting divestment. We might be a small city, but I think it's been shown throughout the past year, two years, that we can be very powerful. And I do agree with what others have said, that this is, that writing this letter to ask for divestment, to support divestment, is pretty much the bare minimum you could do. But it would be a wonderful step for you showing solidarity with your community members, with your constituents, and with people who are standing up against genocide right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy?
Thank you. Divestment's the right thing to do. It's a no-brainer. It's like divesting from apartheid, South Africa. It won't be viewed that way in the future. Well, it will, but my point is, we don't have to wait for the future for it to be viewed that way. It's very much like that already and has been. So you're a little late to the game, but better late than never. Do the right thing. Divest from the war machine, divest from genocide, ask Calpers to do this. And history will be on your side, as will your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna?
Hey, I think I'm actually more nervous speaking on Zoom than I am in person. But I just want to echo and second what everyone, or fifth or a hundredth, what everyone else has already said, that please, please do sign this letter. Going to happen. I hope that I'm right about that. As someone, as multiple other people have said, it is the bare minimum, but it is still a really important stand to take. And thank you all for signing on. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Rachel?
Hi, thank you. Issue with the hand raising after all these years. I am grateful for this opportunity and for you hearing your community. My ask is simple. Please send the letter to Calpers to request divestment. It's the right thing to do. As everyone said, this is an easy and powerful action. And then I just want to speak to my community and tell you all that, you know, eloquent speaking tonight, and thank you. Thanks for everybody who is putting energy into being here.
Thank you. Do you see anyone else on Zoom?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay, so is there anyone else in chambers that wants to speak before I close public comment? Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for a motion to second and discussion. Councilmember Fernandez?
I'll move that we adopt the letter for signing.
Second.
Okay, so discussion? Councilmember Conchera Stiloe?
I'd actually like to propose a couple of changes. One of those changes is in the second paragraph toward the bottom. It's the same sentence I read earlier, but there was something I noticed as I read it. Toward the end, it says, "Supporting Israeli apartheid and genocide." I want to be careful with that, because Israeli is referring to people. And there are people in Israel that do not support what's happening right now. I would like that to be clarified and have, however we need to rework the language, I think it should say Israel, not Israeli. I don't want this being made about individual people. There's plenty that are, our own country and other countries before us have done, that their people didn't necessarily agree with. So if we're not gonna, if we're gonna say we're not targeting individual people, I think we need to make that clear. I don't know if anybody else has an issue with that, but I would prefer that be clarified.
We can address that when the motion's made, or when the, prior to vote? Is there any further commentary? Sure, sure. Councilmember Castellano?
I do support signing this letter and, you know, the change from Israeli to the Israel governments or what was proposed is fine with me. You know, I do want members, and I appreciate members of the public coming here and proposing this item. And, you know, I'm aware of many of your work, you know, in this arena and others, you know, in supporting the people of Gaza and Palestinians. You know, I do want to make it clear that, you know, I support this as a symbolic act and as something that, you know, we can do as a city. I don't want to, you know, kind of move forward with this idea that we're, that this will have much of an effect on Calpers, you know, in terms of their investment strategy or portfolio. Though, I do hope that people listen and they're aware of this. You know, I just want to speak to the problem that, you know, war is privatized at all, and that people can profit off of bombs, off of, you know, selling machines to be used, you know, to kill other people. You know, and I think that there's space to push for legislation, you know, probably not at the national level right now, but, you know, perhaps within California around, you know, the way war industries are profitable. You know, the Calpers has pretty strong stances around divestment and, you know, policies that will make it unlikely that they will divest. You know, and I do appreciate the opportunity to speak and for you, and to hear you on this item. I think that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Yeah, first, I want to thank the person that corrected me on Calsters. So that was something in the back of my mind that I'd forgotten. So thank you for that. And I know that someone else had mentioned that this, this letter doesn't have a fiscal impact for the city. And that's, that's true. And I understand the symbolism that you refer to, Councilmember Castellano. But the action to divest does carry fiscal implications. And the state itself should be investing in those businesses that ethically benefit our state and its residents. There's, from my perspective, a difference in building for a common defense compared to building for profiteering, which is exactly what these funds are going to. And so for me, the moral imperative is to withdraw that financial support from the corporations that enable and benefit from the atrocities taking place that you've described and that we're aware is going on. Fiduciary duty cannot be a shield for complicity in war crimes and ethnic cleansing. True, sustainable value cannot be built on a foundation of oppression, the realities of genocide, apartheid in Palestine, or the brutal war of aggression in Ukraine. Requesting divestment is the bare minimum, as you've all said tonight, too, required to sever that complicity. And that means whether or not this is passed tonight, means that those of you who are able to vote in the Calpers board elections have more work ahead of you, if that's what you want to see happen.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. I also support signing this letter. And of course, it's not enough. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that an ethnicity is not a government. Thank you, Councilmember Conchera Stiloe, for drawing the distinction between an Israeli person and the Israeli government. I have friends in Eureka who are Jewish with Jewish names who are receiving threats against their safety and their businesses despite their opposition to the actions of the Israeli government, simply because of their ethnicity, their faith, and their name. And my friends, we all deserve safety. I just wanted to express support for the Jewish members of our community, whether they're vocal on this issue or not, that they are neighbors as well here. Thank you.
Councilmember Conchera Stiloe?
Thank you, Councilmember Moulton, for bringing that up. That's something that's been weighing on me as well, and I appreciate you taking time for that, because likewise, I have friends in this community who are, who have been made to fear and have been targeted and have been the target of incredibly defamatory statements and a lot of difficulties in our businesses here that have felt persecuted and that are afraid to report crimes that they've experienced. And so, you know, I, I think it's always the challenges, not allowing yourself to become the monsters you oppose. I, there was, there's one other thing I was gonna request, back to that same sentence. I actually don't think we should change numbers one through four. I think I would prefer for us to put a change at the end of that last sentence, right before they're itemized. Because I, I think it should include, this has been an interesting experience as I've gone through and done a lot of studying on this. I actually do think it's, the divestment is a tool that can work. And it was never anything that I've ever considered or even looked at prior to this being brought to my attention. But the history behind some of this, I found was Dr. Leon Sullivan, Baptist minister, minister, who was the first black person appointed to the General Motors Board in 1971. And in 1977, he introduced what he ended up calling the Sullivan Principles. And they were these different actions that they wanted to have taken that would prevent the discrimination that was happening, but it expanded out. And Nelson Mandela later credited those principles with helping, helping end the apartheid. And they were ultimately adapted and adopted by the United Nations in 1999. So this, you know, thing that this gentleman was dreaming up of how, how can things be fair? How can things be better? It took a lot of time. And it's something that, you know, is still going. But I think the reason why divestment does work is because war rarely works without investment. It's expensive. And we have these kind of proxy war situations. And I think I've become convinced too, as, you know, we have the largest economy in the world, in the United States, California is the fourth largest, ahead of Japan. There's an incredible amount of power and money flowing through these entities. And I, you know, on a personal level, I've spent my life working with children and trying to do everything I can to, to feed them, to advocate for them, to foster them, to give them hope, to teach them to read. I've done so many things. I don't approve of, and I've made it clear from here before that I've been anti-war my entire life. This isn't a new position for me. But I don't want to invest in what causes suffering for children anywhere in the world. And I'm, you know, I'm not gonna weigh in. I just, you know, these are in many ways proxy wars, larger, wealthier nations fighting through smaller and poorer places. So, yeah, I would say, you know, I also support this. My request would be with that second sentence. It's not that we change one through four, but that we actually just, and this is, oh, really quick. This is not a left-right thing. As I started researching this, both parties in the United States have called for divestment at different times, like has been brought up with Iran for a variety of reasons. But the idea being, it's very hard to do things without our financial support. And sometimes it forces a conversation that can be avoided when there's plenty of money supplying, avoiding those conversations, avoiding coming up with commitments and compromise. So I would like to keep, I would, I would like if there's a way to adjust that last sentence, that we are asking Calpers to divest from all of its assets and companies. Again, supporting Israel apartheid and genocide, but as well as, maybe we could tack on as well as and continue and keep those four, one through four. So that would have a broad application. Thoughts?
So maker of the motion, Castellano? Oh, excuse me, Fernandez?
I'm having a little trouble tracking what you're, I'm looking at it right now, and I'm having trouble, which...
That's fair. I apologize. I kind of droned on. That last second sentence, I guess what I'm saying is, rather than us suggesting one through four, what specifically only applies to Israel apartheid and genocide, I'm requesting that we expand and we say that we are calling on Calpers to divest from all its assets and companies supporting Israel apartheid and genocide, and then some kind of add-on there that would, including or as well as, so that it would include other things. I don't want to be involved in war profiteering at all, is what I'm trying to say. So I wonder if there's...
Well, could we simply just add war profiteering?
I mean, it's kind of in there, and that's what I was wondering, if there was a way to just kind of do something with that last sentence where it makes that work. And Katie's usually the one that's good at that.
I just wanted to suggest, rather than Israeli, just the Israeli governments, or the government of Israel's apostrophe, like possessive, companies supporting the Israeli government's apartheid and genocide, or companies supporting the government of Israel's apartheid and genocide. Because that separates the actions of the government from the people.
Yeah, I think that would be fine for that part. I was wondering if there was a way that we could, I, does anybody else understand what I was saying, that I was wanting to...
I could try and make a clarification.
Help me, Max.
I think what Councilmember Conchera Stiloe is saying is basically any conflict, any war, not just the Israeli-Palestine conflict, and adding it to be more universal.
Councilmember Moulton?
I'm confused. Are you hoping to make this more? It, it sounds like you're hoping to make this broadly about human rights violations, international law, military occupation, apartheid and genocide, rather than the specific situation? Am I understanding you correctly?
No.
You want to make it more specific?
Yes, and so, yes, the specific about what we're addressing right now. And then, and, and keeping these others. I guess I'm saying this is a good inroad and opportunity for us to say we don't want to be invested in that type of thing in general, not just for the purposes of this.
I think that's what it says.
Well, I'm amenable to that, and I understand, sorry. No, no, I understand where you're coming from, and I'm trying to figure out what would be the language to catch that. Because what we have right now is calling into account the action that's provoking us to say we need this letter. But in addition to the, what's going on, we're also not accepting war profiteering moving forward. And so I don't have the language to put that together in my mind, and I don't want to punt this.
Yeah, no, I don't want to punt it either.
Councilmember Castellano?
How about a line, you know, just adding a line? I mean, one of the things I, I do want to, I think, and I think that's clear amongst all of us, that we want to continue to, to center the Israeli government, you know, but to add a line saying, you know, we... Additionally, the, the city council, the city of Eureka requests that CalPERS refrain from, from investing in assets that are beneficiaries of war profiteering or something along those lines.
Can I add something?
Can I just slurry?
The very last paragraph, it does say that "We can and must use our financial power to exert pressure that could help end the suffering of the Palestinian people and others around the world who are subjected to violence." There's maybe an expansion of that. I don't know.
Does it feel like it's already clear? It feels like it's implied. And that's what I was wondering, is it seems implied, but not...
You want to move from the implicit to the explicit?
Yes.
Good language for that, Councilmember Fernandez?
I think it was going with what Councilmember Castellano had suggested there. So I don't know who caught that, if anyone. Can we rewind it?
I mean, I think it's recorded. But...
But again, I would be...
Additionally, the city council of Eureka requests that CalPERS refrain from investing in companies that are engaged in war profiteering.
Period.
Along those lines.
That would work for me. City attorney? City manager, did you catch that?
We, we caught that. We can go back on the recording, and I have it written down.
Okay.
My suggestion would be that we add that at the end of the letter and not necessarily prior to the lists of CalPERS. Does their preference?
It makes no difference to me where it's at. I just want, yeah, from implicit to explicit.
Great, so we've captured that. Councilmember Castellano?
I don't think this needs to be included in the motion, you know, but I would like to share this with our Assembly member and senator with the encouragement to afford legislation that would support this.
Consensus, thumbs up? Great. That was, all thumbs up. All right. So we've got a motion with an amendment. We've got a second, and the second has agreed to the amendment. Great, so if there's anything further, we... Let's vote.
Four yes, votes. Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
And again, we want to thank everybody that showed up this evening. And over the last couple of years, you're very appreciated. Have a good night. We're adjourned.